But since that environmental engineer is working for the landlord, we thought it was prudent to have our own independent person, an independent company, look at it so that we are satisfied that it's being done properly.
Right, right. But again, even with that, I mean, it's their problem, not ours.
Yes.
So given that...
Our kids are there.
Well, yeah, but right, our kids are there. You know, unfortunately, we never ask the questions up front in terms of, you know, is the site safe? Is it free of any contaminants and that kind of thing? So now we...
There were representations, there were representations in the lease made by the landlord that the site was, complied with the environmental laws.
Okay. But even, and again, that's even a stronger case that they should be picking up the cost and not us. I mean, in my, in my reading of your letter, Mr. Buzard, the DEC required that they perform the remediation and provide them with the air quality test, correct?
Yes.
So that's, and now we're asking, we want to hire StanTech to come in to monitor, to do additional monitoring of the air quality, correct?
To review the work that the environmental consultant, that the landlord retained, to make sure that it's, you know, inconsistent with environmental laws and so that we ourselves are certain that it is, it is safe for our students and staff.
Okay, no problem. But again, I mean, it's their, apparently, they misrepresented.
There were certainly things that showed up in the environmental audit that the district was not aware of.
Okay.
And that we certainly, the DEC required and that we supported being done outside, at that site to make sure it was, it was safe for, for students and for staff.
Yes, excuse me.
So in that case, does that mean that we can break the lease? And should we break the lease?
Yeah.
Because if they, if we entered into an agreement under false premises and if there's contamination in the building, then we don't need to be there. And we need to look at finding some other alternatives for our children. These are my children. And I don't want them to be in any way exposed to anything that may injure or undermine or jeopardize their health. So in my view, we need to look at if that, if we have entered into that arrangement under false pretenses, we need to get out of it.
Mr. Superintendent?
Sure. We actually did quite a bit of diligence looking at 690 St. Paul. In fact, early on, Commissioner White and I visited, I think it was six in the morning, we walked the building. When the lease was being signed, we had an executive session to make sure that we covered all bases. We actually hired real estate, commercial, I guess, real estate attorneys to look at the lease, to make sure that we had all the escape clauses that we needed. This was done with to make us feel better. So we didn't want to rely on the landlord telling us this is safe. So we chose to go to the extra expense of having an independent reviewer to watch what they were doing. Because again, we were concerned about, about the children, making sure that everything was, was actually safe. So this was a choice that we made internally to oversee the work that was being done.
Commissioner Williams?
To oversee the work, but, but the remediation was acquired by, by DEC. I mean, they, the air quality was not up to standard. And it was below standard.
Sorry.
Well, the soil and then the follow-on with the air, the air quality test, correct? I mean, given the fact, from your letter, given the fact that they took out a hundred, a thousand cubic feet of soil and replaced it, says that there is, it must have been a fairly major problem.
Well, actually, we didn't find, John, if you want to come in, and Jim, Jim is here. A lot of what we did was really sort of precautionary. Jim, do you want to add? You've been part of this.
We actually had the regulatory agencies come in, the department, the local Department of Health, the State Department of Health, and the State DEC. And they all looked at it and issued reports and came in and said it was safe, had engagement meetings with the parents. So the, the monitoring was below their standard.
They came in, now I'm getting confused because you're saying that the DEC or OSHA or State Ed came in and said it was safe?
Right.
That was only after the landlord was, was required to do the remediation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it, so it wasn't, I mean, just after the fact, but not...
No, no, it actually wasn't after the fact, it was while they were doing remediation.
Okay, but there was, I mean, there, there must have been some significant contamination. I mean, if, under the Phase Two audit, from what I read, after we signed the lease, they wanted to finance the, they basically wanted to take money out of the property. They went to a bank, wanted to get financing. The bank said, wait a minute, let's do a Phase One audit. The Phase One audit raised a lot of problems, our issues, our concerns. They said, let's do a Phase Two audit, at which point they then had to go through and do the remediation. So there was a fair amount of significant level of contamination there. There must have been.
The, the level of contamination was always below the state
Right.
and local standards. The remediation and the monitoring was done as extra measures to ensure that, that we were satisfied with the condition that was the healthiest it could be. We're talking about soil samples that were below the, the concrete slab on the, on the ground floor. And it was, it was actually air samples from the, the concrete slab.
Okay, last question on this.
All right. But the thousand cubic feet of soil that had to be removed, was that a request or requirement by the DEC?
It was requirement.
Okay. So that it, it must not have been below, then, their standards? It couldn't have been?
We're talking about two different things.
Okay.
We're talking about air monitoring and you're talking about the soil remediation.
Right.
They, they were digging up in the front and they found oil tanks, which is not unusual in the city. And they took them out and they remediated all the soil.
Okay. And then, when they started doing the air quality testing, that's when they find, found the tri-chloroethylene, correct?
Right.
Now, was that in the soil and in the air sampling or both?
Both.
Okay.
Trace amounts below their standards.
So in, in simple terms, the building was safe per state guidelines. What we did was beyond, above and beyond what was required.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
May I just add one thing about that? They're doing ongoing, one of the things we required that the landlord would do was ongoing air monitoring. And, and that is still being, still being done on, in the school.
Now, did we require that or did the state require that? Or did DEC require the air monitoring?
We told the landlord that we wanted it to be done. Certainly the DEC supported it. It's something we asked for.
And why?
And the landlord has, is, is paying for that.
Paying for?
The, the, the air mon...
Air monitoring. Then what's StanTech doing?
The sole purpose for StanTech is, we wanted to make sure that there was somebody who's working for the school district. Somebody that answered to the school district and didn't answer to the landlord so that we were comfortable that when we were getting data, that we could rely on that.
Right. And I don't have a problem with that. But again, my question is, it's their problem, why don't they pay for it? And StanTech could, could give us all the data, do all the monitoring, but they should pick it up. I mean, we're paying these guys over a million dollars a year. And our kids are sitting over there. They should pick it up, not us.
Well, we, we can certainly be happy to, of course, to take the direction of Mr. Buzard in terms of how we proceed, but there's no reason we cannot go back to the landlord and ask for reimbursement for these costs. But this was something that we, we could simply have relied upon the landlord's experts, but given that we were going to be taking possession of the school, we found out about this in the days leading up to the commencement of classes, we wanted to make sure that we could rely upon our own experts to evaluate the safety of the site.
Okay. And I, just one final point. The problem I have with that in terms of us not asking the questions up front, we had the same problem or the same issue, it could have been more than a month or two before, when we were looking at the site over on Maple Street for School 54, correct? I mean, we were, we were all set.
I think that was ongoing, it was back around.
Well, no, we're right. But the same, the same issues applied. The site of a former charter school had closed down. We were looking at the site in order to put in a School 54. Everything was all set. The city went in and said, well, wait, before we do this, let's do an environmental test. Came up, there was a presence of contamination and the city backed off, we couldn't do it. So somewhere along the lines, when we did this, the light bulb should have gone off and somebody's had to say, look, why don't we ask the same sort of questions? You know, can we get a Phase One or Phase Two audit in order to make sure that we get a clean bill of health? And no one did it. And now we have this problem. I mean, somewhere, some, someone should have said, hey, you know, we have the same set of conditions, the same set of circumstances, let's just ask. And we didn't do it.
Okay, thank you. Last and final questions around Resolutions 419 through 444.
Uh, yeah, I had a question on 429. I was reading it and I wasn't very clear as if whether or not our agreement with Margarita Cauldron was, the training was only for Dulles, Essel and Jefferson and I believe it was Monroe. Are those the only schools that, that the training was provided for?
Mr. Superintendent Buzard?
Ms. Patterson?
I believe this was district-wide in an attempt to offer our young people more options than just those schools.
Okay, thank you. I need, I need a motion to extend the meeting past the 8:30. Moved by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, we're extended. 419 through 444, all those in favor?
I had an additional question.
Okay, Commissioner Brennan, one more question?
About StanTech, could the superintendent expound a little bit or explain to us what would be the consequences of us delaying action on this resolution until the suggestion was proffered to the vendor relative to their picking up?
We would need to rely on the data coming from the landlord. So we would have the independent consultant that we want to make sure that we are getting data, we feel perhaps is outside the landlord's...
And I understand, I understand. I think it's actually a good idea to get our own, our own expert, if you will, but the suggestion was made that we ought not pick up the cost of this. And what would be the consequences of us not acting until we had an answer to their, to their...
Well, the landlord will claim that they already have someone monitoring and providing data and really is not obligated to pay for this independent consultant, so the person may be dropped.
I understand.
Yeah.
It's likely, but the consequences of delay would be what?
We wouldn't have the independence, really, and be relying on the landlord to give us information.
Okay, thank you.
And they've already started, if you remember my letter a few weeks ago, because this happened right before school started, we wanted to move on this right away. So in some ways, they've already done a lot of the work. So it would mean having to perhaps stop the work that they're doing right now, reviewing what's happening at the site.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I just want to add to the superintendent's remarks. You know, the administration engaged in a contract in good faith to do what's right for our students. Contract is a contract is a contract. We can't really not pay them for work done. If we want to direct the superintendent to try to recoup those costs, that's a separate action. And then the dialogue or the discussion has to be, well, is it going to cost us more in legal fees to try to take up this matter with the landlord than, than the actual bill? But the bottom line is that this was a good faith contract and I, I think it's up to us to honor that as a board and address the issues between ourselves and the landlord as a separate matter.
And if I may too, part, part of the work was lessons, some lessons learned, Commissioner, from 54. And being blindsided by getting only a letter from the city of Rochester, letting us the site was not usable. So we would try to be proactive, knowing this was a former Vashon long site and knowing we'd be entering a long-term lease with this organization. We wanted to make sure that we felt comfortable beyond, again, what this still requires, beyond what the landlord was doing, knowing that we had nearly a thousand students in that building.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move, I'm gonna call the question on 419 through 444. I'll do a roll call vote. You can say aye on the ones you're voting aye on, just to make it easier for myself and the clerk, and no on the ones that you're voting no on. Or start with Resolution 419 through 444, or start with an advisory vote from our student rep on 419 through 444.
I have one more question. Am I able to ask?
441, I'm sorry, 419 through 441. What's your question?
It was a follow-up question for Ms. Patterson-Grant. As far as the 429 resolution, are, because we are, our teachers are being trained district-wide, does that mean that we are having more kids coming in that are in need for Essel? Like, for example, we've had several Wilson kids coming in from refugee camps and they're struggling with English. And I was just curious as for the training, is that what the goal for that is?
That's part of it. We are challenged by increasing numbers and we have to make sure our teachers and schools have the skill set and the capacity to deal with the student population. So you're very much on point.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. 419 through 441, starting with our student rep, your advisory vote on those?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Oh, we take in a block or...
Um, yeah, you have taken us a block. You can say aye on the ones, and then the ones you're voting no on, just let me know.
Okay. Aye on 419. 420 we polled, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And 421, no. 422, no. 423, 424, 425...
...what they're doing, what they're trying to do.
No. 426, yes. 427, no. 428, yes. 429, 430 and 431, no. All the others, yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, did you capture that? Okay. Commissioner Powell?
Oh, yes, to all.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice President White?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
The following votes are no, 423 through 425, 427, 429 and 430.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Commissioner Campos? Thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
Yes, on all except no on 431.
I vote yes to all. And we will now move on to, Madam Clerk, have you captured all the votes? I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything.
Yes.
You have them all? Thank you. We will now move on to unfinished business from previous meeting. We have none.
President Evans?
Yes.
I just wanted to, in light of the election and we had on the agenda last month, have Ted and I re-strung to talk about the African-American Studies Program. And I, I'm just hoping now that with the election of the first African-American president, that we really look at, include it into our texts, that we, we become really aggressive about including people of color, in my case, African-Americans, into the everyday learning in, in, in this district. I, I really do believe that with the election of President Obama, that we're going to be forced to do that now. But I tend to believe that some of the problems that we're currently having now, and the reason why so many people are talking about this in-school suspension program, has to do with the fact in, in part, that in those classrooms, they're not taught about people who look like them. And they're not engaged. That's in part, that's in part. And so I'm just, I just wanted to say that...
Okay.
...look forward to the curriculum increasing.
Thank you. New business, we, we have none, but I know next new business, I know we wanted to discuss the...
Yeah. And also, just a point of personal privilege, if I...
Briefly, briefly, briefly.
One thing I noticed in this meeting, that when we have people who come in these meetings in opposition, and I've seen where community folk have come in, and I see visible security. I do not see visibly in this room tonight, security. And that concerns me. So if we have security with people in, particularly in the African-American community come in here, and there's this position of intimidation or aggression, I don't see it in here. Because I'm, I'm just as afraid, I'm just, I, I could be, I'm not, but I could be, just as afraid of the people who are in this room tonight as, as others who may be when they see black folk come up here and speak. And they're speaking with passion. Now, I am listening, I don't agree with Commissioner Powell. I believe, I don't believe that these people are moms and I believe they have a right to protest. But at the same time, if we're going to, let's be fair, if we're going to have security in these rooms when black folk get in here, we should have them in here now, or not have it at all. So I have a problem with that. Serious problem with that.
Right.
And the other thing, I, I really would like to say something if I could about ISS before we leave because I think it would be...
Well, I would just let, I would just ask that you could hold that to the end. Because otherwise, we have to let all the other commissioners talk and then the folks that are here won't be able to speak.
Well, it, well, what was your response?
No, I was saying we can hold it to the end. If commissioners want to make comments, I want to let our guests be able to speak first and then we can say something to the end.
What was the new, what was the new business?
Um, no new business, no new business.
So we're going to speak after all the speakers?
Yes. If somebody wants to say something, stay and say something, they can feel free to do that.
All right.
We're now going to move to our speakers list on, other than agenda items, we have a list of speakers. I will, I will call up our first six speakers. The clerk will start the clock as, as previously, and when you hear the beep, I would just ask that you conclude your remarks because we do have a strong, a, a long list of speakers. So I want to start with Inez Burns. Is Inez here?
Yes.
Followed by Willie, Willie Sanders. Is Mr. Sanders here? Karen Bonahin? Is Karen here? Simon Chapman? Mr. Chapman here? Simone Chapman, I'm sorry. Simone Chapman here? Ms. Chapman here? Is Mr. Wallace Smith here? I saw Mr. Smith. Wallace Smith, please.
I'm coming.
I see you. And then Wallace will be followed by Mr. Glennie Williams.
Most of our parents and students got locked up. That's them you hear chanting downstairs, okay? I know you can hear it. And we're going to have our parents, come on, read so far, prepare remarks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am a parent and my child attend the Freedom School. And so far this year at Freedom School, her grade point average is 2.98. So you know I'm very proud. What, what I'm here for is, we support Dr. Pringle in all her efforts to bring a sense of balance to East High School and to refocus the school back on, on our children. Let me be clear, the problem at East High School did not mysteriously appear this year or last year, but as, has, but has come to the front, forefront, after years of neglect and lack of true accountabilities. What it will take to bring the school back into balance first is for the adult stewards of the building to be committed to the children. Adult issues, all adult issues should only be handled by adults. Secondly, we should support what works. And we need to stop doing the things that don't. In spite of the current hurdles, of the suspension policies, we have, you got to excuse me because I'm nervous.
That's okay.
We have experienced tremendously success at the East Freedom Connection, working with parents and children who have not succeeded in the seventh grade prior to the East Freedom Connection. We utilize the vehicles of hermangously relationship between parents, teachers, administrations and community, keeping the children at the core of decision-making. And following this method, we have been able to increase attendance from under 30% to as well as 90%. Using the same hermangously framework, we were able to establish a discipline.
Thank you. That's your time, I'm sorry. But thank you very much for your comments.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Van Kirkhove. Barbara Van Kirkhove? Barbara here? Hello, Barbara. Barbara will be followed by Mary Coffey. Is Mary here?
No, she was downstairs.
I thought I saw Mary. Okay, good. Barbara followed by Mary Coffey, and I really hope that Mr. Ron Ring is here.
I don't see him.
We don't, only the person that signed up to speak can speak. We, we don't fill in for folks that aren't here. Barbara?
Hi. I've been a parent volunteer at School 12 for several years, including on the school-based planning team. I've been concerned about violence in our community and our schools for the past several years. However, my volunteer work raising our daughter and my own journey towards peace, I am growing confident in my understanding about the nature of violence. As my understanding grows, I'm becoming encouraged that there is a way towards peace and non-violence. We probably all want our schools to be places of safety and trust where engaged learning flourishes. However, there are barriers to creating such schools, such as using labels and comparisons, criticizing, making demands and threatening punishment. These practices stimulate fear and contribute to excessive stress, underperformance, violent behavior and higher dropout rates. This sounds like an overwhelming problem, but I don't think it is. I think we can gradually change the culture in our schools to a culture of peace, safety and compassion rather than fear and violence. How can this happen? We need to first focus on the needs of students and teachers, on the basic human needs that we all share, such as the need for shelter, rest, play, learning and autonomy. No matter what we say, learning is not the only need students bring to school. They also bring their needs for belonging, fun, freedom, consideration and autonomy. In these new culture classrooms, teachers would know this and treat all of these needs as important. So as William Glasser says, how about we change our focus from disciplining students to meeting needs? In our new culture classrooms, students and teachers also would learn and practice a new way of communicating these needs and listening to the needs of others so that everyone's needs are more likely to get met. This means becoming aware of the habitual ways we now communicate our needs and practicing a new, non-confrontational way of expressing them. It also means practicing empathy.
Thank, thank you, I'm sorry, that's your time. Thank you so much. Mary, Mary Coffey? I saw Mary. And Mary Coffey will be followed by Ron Ring. Ron, are you here?
No.
Okay. Ron, then after Mary, Alfredo Gonzalez, if you're here. Mary?
Good evening. I am Mary Coffey. I'm co-chair of the North Wynton Village Association, of which East High School is our high school within our association. And I will say, Dr. Pringle, Jim Shepherd, representatives from City Hall and the school board, we all met about East High School and the security. Because the children were leaving East High School, going down the street into the basements doing drugs. And thank you to all of them that have secured and taken, no children are walking out that school now and doing drugs. So it goes to show how citizens can start working with their schools and making them what they should be. I also want to thank you, Mr. Superintendent, on the zero tolerance, or not on the zero tolerance, on this long-term suspension. Many of you know me and a lot of our colleagues because we asked to meet with you over a year ago. And we asked to meet with you a group of community leaders from all over the city. And one of the main issues from all over the city was the zero tolerance. So the citizens of Rochester have said, we do not like zero, or we do not like the long-term suspension. In all due respect, Mr. Obansky, I understand your need for safety for teachers and I understand that. I work in a job myself where we go into drug houses and with pit bulls, guns, with a cellphone for the safety of children. So, uh, safety is a concern. However, the union has to work with the school board and the citizens of Rochester to make this work and make it safe. So as a citizen, thank you...
Thank you.
...for standing up for this.
Thank you, Mary. Alfredo Gonzalez? Is Alfredo Gonzalez here? Alfredo Gonzalez will be followed by Dana Bratcher. Alfredo Gonzalez will be followed by Dana Bratcher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I was here last month. I'm here again. I, I understand the issue of safety is very important for our children in our city school district. But also, as I stand outside waiting to come in here, it's a shame that the union has to use our children to get the agenda here this evening. It was very sad to be sitting here to use for that reason. We have a high, the highest dropout of Latino students in this community, nothing is being done with that. So, we need to address those things as a community and as a citizens. We don't need to use our children for the young agenda. So, you don't represent the Latino community, we represent the Latino community here, and we need to do a better job in that area. And also, we have the lowest radiation rates also in here. What are we going to do about that? So, that is very important for our Latino community, and we're speaking about its own life. Don't be respectful, okay? Don't, don't laugh, because you make plenty of money from our tax money, because I live in the city too. I pay your salary. So, don't be, we didn't face like that.
Thank you. Dana Bratcher followed by Crystal Chambers. Is Dana, is Dana Bratcher here?
Yes.
Thought I saw you, Dana. And Dana will be followed by Crystal Chambers.
Hello, everybody. First, they should turn the mics up, because we can't really hear you.
The, the mics are turned up as lo, as loud as they can go, including ours. So, speaking to the mic, Dana, so that we can make sure we hear you.
Well, I represent ARM, which is Activists Against Racism Movement, and this is our statement as far as this issue with teachers protesting and how we feel about the, the new policy with the in-school suspension. First of all, we support Superintendent 100% as long as the direction is going toward finding new and better constructive, positive educational alternatives. So, we support you 100%, like we've always said. I'm just going to read a little bit. The bottom line is the issue, is the question of whether or not we, as a system, will continue to suspend students in mass or keep them in school and attempt to deal with the underlying issues regarding inappropriate behaviors. The superintendent seems to be saying enough is enough. We have to do something different, and doing something different begins with keeping children The clear message, the superintendent is sending a, a loud and clear message that business as usual dumping children is no longer acceptable. But then neither is cheap, quick fix, less than well-thought-out alternatives. He didn't say that, but that's generally the idea. I'm hoping y'all with me. We must start somewhere. Unless the teachers' union and/or others have better ideas, let's stop all of the posturing and politicking with our children's lives and begin with Superintendent Bazzard's ideas. Let's get on with the work that is so desperately needed. Lastly, we are absolutely unequivocally convinced that there is an element of racism at work in the minds and hearts of many who want to return to the dump 'em in the streets philosophy and practice. We believe that if the majority of the students involved in infractions were white, many teachers who are now willing to dump them would likely be their starches advocates relative to appropriate interve, intervention and support.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bratcher. Crystal Chambers, is, uh, Crystal here? I thought I saw Crystal Chambers. Oh, there she is. And Crystal will be followed by Hazel King.
Good evening, everyone. I brought this article that I wrote in the Democrat and Chronicle Wednesday, October 17th, October 17th, 2007, just a year ago, and it's called "Teachers, Students Both Learn in the Karen Community at Franklin." I would encourage you to read it, and I'd like to leave it if you don't mind. I had a speech prepared, but what I was able to do was stand outside and wait for my name to be called, and I saw the television screen, and I listened to Mr. Bazzard. Mr. Bazzard, you helped me personally, because I'm also a parent and a teacher, get my son out of long-term suspension twice, East and Franklin. He is now an A student doing well at both, he's one. But what I heard you said was racism. And when I heard that word racism, racism, the camera was pointing on you and you alone. And I thought when I walked in here, I would see one race, but instead I see a diverse community. Second, Ms. Powell, I heard you say mob. I thought when I walked in here, I'd see some angry people, but what I see are calm people participating in the political process. Ms. Elliott, please don't, please don't clap.
Please, you're stopping, you're interrupting her time.
I need my two minutes. Ms. Elliott, I heard you say that what needs to be taught in the classroom is more history about people who look like us. I am a history teacher, and I teach about people that look like us every single day. And I go to professional development with people that don't look like me, and we put together lesson plans that include a diverse population of both Asian, Latinos, Hispanic, in addition to African-Americans. And the, the speaker before me, Mr. Urbanski, should be able to smile if he'd like to. This is a political process, what America is made of. What we have in front of us is not easy. I worked in a lunchroom, and I saw a girl get attacked by an ISS student. She went to get-ready program, was arrested today for attacking students in the get-ready program. Thank you.
Thank you. Hazel King? Is, is Hazel King here? Hazel King, okay. Dan DiClemente, I thought I saw Dan. Dan DiClemente will be followed by Paul Conroe.
My name is Dan DiClemente, and I represent the food service workers who are being threatened, the secretaries who feel intimidated, the school safety officers that the same few adolescents are swinging at due to an in-school suspension policy that is falling short of helping students who are suspended while placing into jeopardy the safety of the students who aren't. Poorly conceived and inadequately staffed programs have turned in-school suspension rooms into overcrowded holding tanks, ill-equipped to moderate the behavior and educate a population that we are all trying desperately not to lose to the lack of successive out-of-school suspensions. When my daughters get into a fight with one another, my wife and I don't throw them out of the house, but we don't send them to the same room either with 22 other kids in it. Teenagers who are turned away because the in-school suspension rooms exceed maximum capacity, push other staff and students aside as they race through the halls, bang on classroom doors, and scream profanity at adults who are constantly reminded that there isn't a damn thing that they can do about it. As a custodial assistant who was at Jefferson when Stephanie Givens's life was needlessly taken, I can assure you that none of us want to go through the pain of that tragedy again. Paying little attention to the opinions of staff who work in our schools on a daily basis that tell you that this policy is failing all kids miserably is reminiscent of the mentality of a failed leadership style perfected by George W. Bush. A poorly conceived in-school suspension policy can be perilous to the rest of the school community, and it can send a message to parents that the district is simply isolating troublesome adolescents in order to pull down out-of-school suspension numbers. We need to do more to look out for the teen who misbehaves because their home life is unconscionable, but it should never come at the expense of the model student, who may suddenly develop attendance problems and risk suspension themselves as a result of being afraid to go to school. Until we can all collectively develop an in-school suspension policy that has the resources to make it successful, in the immediate interest of safety for all students and staff, on behalf of the concerns expressed to me by the many dedicated support staff workers throughout the Rochester City School District, we implore the Board of Education to do the right thing and suspend the superintendent's in-school suspension policy until further review.
Thank you, Mr. DiClemente.
Thank you for listening.
Paul, Paul, Paul Conroe. Paul Conroe will be followed by Margaret Kreuzon.
Good evening. My name is Paul Conroe. I'm probably one of the biggest supporters of this school district. I'm an East High graduate, and I've been teaching at East High for eight years. This was the best opening that we've had in my eight years of teaching. Under the direction of Scott Markslove, there was planning, there was direction, there was communication of how school was going to be conducted, and every student benefited and was able to learn during the month of September. When the policy was enacted where suspensions were no longer an option, the climate got worse each week, and I've communicated that to some of the leadership in the district. This policy is hurting the students that it intends to help. Some kids choose to throw their education away. This policy is inviting them to throw harder. There is no motivation to attend class, there is no consequence if they do not misbehave, or if they do not behave. On Monday, I alerted a few district leaders by email about what is going on at East, as I've been doing. Here's a quote. "Action needs to be taken before the danger turns to tragedy." Today, this is more urgent. At East High, action needs to be taken before the danger turns to tragedy. To that end, I have some solutions. My sister teaches in the Bronx in New York City, and there, I'll list some school names. Lehman High School, Washington Irving High, John Adams High, Brandeis High, Truman High, Renaissance High, Evander Campus and the Morris Campus. Diverse populations, the school that my teacher, or that my sister teaches at Lehman High is primarily Hispanic. There, they have a alternative to suspension where students come in to a room staffed by a teacher and an administrator from 3:00 PM till 5:00 PM, 3:00 to 6:00, 3:00 to 7:00, where they're in small groups, there's funding for it, and...
Thank you. Your time is up, thank you. But if you could leave those notes that you have, I don't know if you have them typed out in some way, can you either get them to the clerk here or get them to us?
Yep.
I'd be very interested in hearing them. Thank you. Margaret Kreuzon, followed by Eileen Lynch.
As an educator, I come before you to share my thoughts on how all of us are failing our children. We have a problem. It is identified as malpractice in convenience of accountability and responsibility in response to the negative actions of children. What do I mean? In education, repetition is a key element in learning to read, learning the multiplication tables, writing cogently in establishing connections, routines, and rituals. Each child learns at a different pace and may need the infusion of differentiated instruction to comprehend the pedagogy of the discipline. When you have a classroom where 5% to 10% of the students enjoy causing disruption, you have a disaster. How can this be resolved? As educators, we all need to agree that inappropriate behaviors need consistent consequences. These consequences need to include behavior modification classes incorporated with the academic issues that the students are missing from being out of the classroom. Right now, some of our students have come to the conclusion that it is acceptable to fight, vocalize the litany of profanity towards others, destroy school property, and injure others. Why? Well, we will be arrested today and back in school tomorrow. What we need is a solid collaboration with leaders of all our bargaining units, along with the folks in the trenches and the students, to come up with a plan of action that not only distributes consequences, but in fact provides educational opportunities to change negative behaviors. I know in my heart that we have excellent people within our district and our city and county governments with the expertise to guide us along to a successful program for all children. I will not affix blame. It is, however, time to gather together and act so that the quality education process can continue. Postulating blame on one another is not the way to do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kreuzon. Eileen Lynch, followed by Lucia Espinoza.
Hello. Thank you for letting me come tonight. I understand that, you know, Mr. Bazzard wants to keep kids off the street, and they should be getting their education, and I, I understand those, that kind of a goal. However, when we return to school this year at East High School, and I am a city resident, and I am a taxpayer, and I am a parent also, and a teacher at East High School, I have been very concerned about the safety of the students that I have in class. When I have students ask me, "Ms. Lynch, can you come with me while I go to the bathroom?" The administration appears to have an, was given this thing that you cannot suspend anyone, but they suddenly had that ability taken from them without any kind of alternative put in its place. And I'm not going to even give you the speech that I actually had written, because many of the students that spoke tonight, they were not forced to speak, they came here, they were articulate, and they all had the same message. My teachers are going in the hallway to stop the noise while the sentries are outnumbered 50 to 1. There is, we can't, they can't keep up with the number of children that are doing things like pulling the fire alarm, throwing a desk and chair down the stairwell, and thank God, Ms. Campos, that that wasn't you in the stairwell that day, because you were in the school the day that happened. People are going to get hurt. Many of my students have complained, "Can't we just suspend those kids? Can't we just suspend those kids?" And many of the kids that are disrespectful to the administration, to the teachers, and to the other kids in the school are kids that just really don't want to attend class, and maybe an alternative inside the school that is, you know, better managed would have helped them out. No one's asking to dump the kids out. We had a system last year, we had it broken into two halves, and it appeared like it worked much better. But I don't like it when I hear kids commit a violent act in front of me and say, "There's not a damn thing you can do about it."
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Lucia Espinoza? Is Lucia here? And Lucia will be followed by Beth Bills.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I am Lucia Espinoza, I'm a resident of the city and a teacher at East High School. I am profoundly worried about this shrinking amount of safe public space for all members of this beloved community, but especially for the children. Many of our students avoid certain places in neighborhoods for fear of violence. That behavior that we see in the streets has come to East High School halls. On a good day, your request for students to go to class is met with stares. On a bad day, I am met with graphic violent sexual insults. The halls of East are the streets. Learning cannot take place while groups, real mobs of students, run, curse, scream, kick on classroom doors, overturn garbage cans, pull fire alarms, and fight. No learning happens under mob rule. All children, even the misguided ones, deserve a safe public space. However, these children should not be allowed to harm other children's intellectual development, and that's what we're talking about here, folks, intellectual development. We should not enable their wrong choices. When troubled students go to another safe setting or an out-of-school suspension, the responsible children get to learn. Es imposible aprender cuando hay amenazas, peligro, insultos, peleando en los pasillos. No se puede aprender. Gracias por su atención. We love East High School. Please help us reclaim it. Please take us seriously. We're the ones that spend the most time with the kids. Por favor. Gracias.
Thank you. Beth Bills? Is Beth Bills here? Kenneth Davis? Kenneth Davis? Mr. Davis will be followed by Adam Urbanski.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenneth Davis. I work here for the City School District. I work over in the customer service center. I said, "My name is Kenneth Davis. I work for the City School District, and I work in the customer service center." So, I just wanted to make a few comments on this. I know it's a safety issue for us guys as our staff in the building, but working in the customer service center, I get a chance to hear the call coming in from the parents pertaining to the students who are being attacked, and I get the calls coming in from the parents pertaining to the students who are the attacker. So, I want to say this. This percentage of students that you're talking about are predominantly black males. Most of them are African-American students. And I'm not saying this to push a slant one way or the other, but that's, that's the truth of the matter. So, in saying that, before we rush to throw the baby out with the dirty bath water, think seriously about that percentage of students that you're talking about. It's a very small percentage, and inside of that percentage, it's even smaller for the ones who are the alpha, alpha males and alpha females inside that lead that type of action within the buildings. Okay, having said that, the staff in the building, and please don't take this wrong. I mean, children let, children do what you let them do. So, I mean, wait a minute, just, just hear me out. Don't take my time off. Children do what you let them do. Children do what you let them do. So, this group of kids that you're dealing with, just because you have the college degree and the certification, don't mean you're equipped to deal with these type kids. So, what we need to do as a community is bring in the proper people to deal with this small percentage of people within the building. Giving them to teachers who are taught to deal with the orthodox student when you're dealing with someone who completely aren't orthodox. Who, and let's keep it real, they're straight from the streets. This is a street mentality type thing that we're dealing with. So, professionals that, working for the district, a lot of them are not equipped to deal with this.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Adam Urbanski. Mr. Dr. Urbanski will be followed by Christine Frederick.
First, I want to thank my colleagues for staying here, for not being discouraged and leaving even though they had to sit through the entire meeting. Let me now say this. Teachers want to teach. Most students want to learn. More and more, teachers can't teach and students can't learn because of the lack of safety, lack of order, and lack of discipline in our schools. We don't want to suspend students either. We don't need to suspend as many students as we have been suspending. But some students need services and settings that could help to resolve the problems and needs that they have that are not being provided in our comprehensive schools. Your policy, Mr. Bizard, only sounds good. It is not good and sound. The environment for teaching and learning is getting worse, not better, since you issued the policy. Denial is not a strategy. Reprisals is not a strategy. We are yet to learn whether or not you will have a strategy, and we cannot afford to wait long enough until a tragedy forces this district to develop a strategy. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha, Martha Keating. Martha Keating, followed by Ellen Best. Yes, Martha, I was going to say Martha Keating changed. Martha Keating, followed by Ellen Best. I'm sorry, did I skip Christine Frederick? Oh, I'm sorry. Christine Frederick, followed by Martha Keating.
I just wanted to check that list.
It's getting late.
Trust is, trust is one element of security. It is built through time and shared experience and not given freely. I'm an East High teacher. Trust is eroded in our school. My neighbors, friends, and families trust me as an expert in education. Based on my service to the City School District since 1991, two years working in a college in Russia as a Peace Corps volunteer, one recent year working in Moldova as a Fulbright-funded exchange fellow, and as an Edison Tech graduate of 1986 and a Southwedge resident, my community trusts me to recommend programs or schools. What can I say to them? I know that I will tell them the honest truth, but my administrators and district leaders do not trust me. And I'm not sure that as a staff, we are always told the truth. Teachers are not trusted when the district mandates curriculum that we feel is not appropriate or relevant to our students. We are not trusted when tests are mandated that take up valuable lesson time. Students recognize the invalidity of excessive testing. Excessive testing erodes their trust in the learning process. We are accused of racism by the superintendent for our frustration with the no-suspension policy that's not properly supported, even though we might support the theory. We are told that our building is safe, but my sixth, seventh, and eighth period students come to my class angry, defensive, and hurt, scratched and bleeding sometimes, clothes dirty from food fights, from the pervasive aggression that they face in lunch and in the hallways. Students need to feel safe in class, and the trusting security that I value in my classroom is challenged by the lack of attention to a peaceful environment in other areas of the building.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick. Thank you. Now Martha Keating. Followed by Ellen Best.
Commissioners and Superintendent Bizard, I, I think the problem was and remains that the devil's in the detail. And this thing was developed maybe over a 10-week period, maybe there was discussion a couple of weeks prior to that, but really, there was no procedures, no directions, no details done, and this is your result. I, I don't wish to cast any blame on anybody, but it's the truth. I am reading tonight a statement from an ISS teacher who is afraid to come and speak to you because of fear of reprisal. The situation at my high school in the ISS room is a complete disaster. There has been a real lack of direction in terms of policies and procedures, and the program has been negatively affecting the climate of the building all year. The program has also already, after three months, been renamed with a new set of policies, but there are still no written policies or procedures in place for the, the teachers in the rooms to follow. Among the new policies that have been introduced is one bathroom break per day for students. I don't know about you, but I couldn't make it. Students who leave the room or do not comply, uh-oh, are being sent home, although the procedure for this has not been discussed. As a result, many of these students are simply wandering the halls. Most distressing about these new initiatives is that they were applied with no plan in place and little thought to how they would impact the program or the building. The room is typically populated with an even mix of students awaiting long-term suspension hearings and students out for short-term ISS assignments. As a result, you have students out for lesser infractions in the same room as children who have committed much more serious acts. Let me conclude by saying that it certainly has not reduced the recidivism in our schools, nor has it had a positive impact on the climate of the building. Most important, this program fails to meet the needs of our most at-risk students. Those in need of the greatest support who get very little, and that is the most disappointing aspect.
Thank you, Ms. Keating. Ellen Best. Ms. Best will be followed by Debbie Jackett.
Good evening. I have, I've been a music teacher in this district for 22 years and in public education for 28 years, and I'd like to begin by this quote from Martin Luther King. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." It matters that the good work we are doing in our buildings, that our students are doing, is being overshadowed by this kind of issue. It matters that chronically disruptive students are creating an atmosphere where students who want to learn cannot learn. It matters that there seems to be an adversarial and divisive feeling creeping into what should be a collaborative approach to handling the serious behavioral issues in our schools. It matters that teachers are feeling discouraged from speaking out. It matters that students with serious behavioral problems are not provided the service environment they need to learn to succeed. We do have advocacy for these students, and it matters to me that there seems to be a denial about the effect that the current policy is having. We have been advocating for our students. We care about our students. You care about our students. We know this. But in all good conscience, we cannot stay silent on these things that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Jackett, followed by Janice Ford.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Jackett. I am the second vice president of RTA. I'm also a special ed teacher, and I teach at 17 School. I've been teaching there for 20 years, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to actually talk a little bit about Superintendent Bizard's, some of the comments that he has made or some of the commitments that he has made when he's, when he's came to this district. And I seem to recall, I was going to do a little research on this, so I hope I get this right. I seem to recall that when you first came, you spent a lot of time talking to many, many people in this community and certainly in the school community. And you talked about trying to eliminate a climate of fear. And I think you were specifically talking about a climate of people being able to speak freely and not be fearful about what they said. And I'm going to ask, I'm going to remind you of that and ask you to really think about what you meant. I was very pleased when you said that. I'm very, very concerned that all of a sudden, we seem to have a terrible climate of fear. Specifically, we have a faculty rep who spoke up and is being punished apparently for what he said. So, that doesn't seem to me to be eliminating a climate of fear. Second of all, I know you came and spoke to teachers a couple of times, large groups of teachers. One of the things you told us that you consistently heard from principals was the need for guidance counselors and social workers in schools to help work with kids that had lots of emotional needs or a lot of family needs, and that that seemed to be something you were really going to give to all of the schools. I personally am going to suggest to you that that's something that would help much, much more than continually hiring more and more security guards to try to bolster up a failed program of in-school suspension. And then finally, I'm going to also ask you, you've talked a lot about, or you've made the comments about teachers or staff stepping up. And of course, implicit in that is the implication that people aren't stepping up. I'm going to tell you, I do step up, but I'm also going to tell you that I sure don't appreciate it when a fellow who's six foot four keeps telling me as a five-foot-two teacher to step up. I don't know if you mean that I should be in an unsafe situation. I do step up. I do step up, and so do all of my fellow colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Jackett. Janice Ford. Janice Ford, followed by Lori Thomas. Is Janice here? Janice? Lori Thomas.
We are elementary school teachers, and we want the board and everyone to know that the problems we are having with our students do not begin at the secondary level, but at the elementary level. We are concerned about students being moved up without having achieved mastery.
We are underestimating the intelligence of our children. There is a process of failure that our children recognize and accept. Low expectations and a less-than-engaging curriculum lead to frustration that leads to anger, which leads to violence in the classroom.
The first time a child is passed on to the next grade without achieving mastery, they begin this process of failure, which is driven by social promotion.
Wait, it's not called social promotion.
It's not? Then what's it called? They call it moving on up to the next grade. We didn't learn anything all year, but we're moving on up to the next grade. We're only learning not to care.
I'm not doing no work, and I'm not passing no tests.
We've had a whole lot of fun, but we ain't learned that much yet. Now we're up in the sixth grade, wondering what's up next. We're full of fear. We've been failing for years, and they don't see nothing wrong with that because we're moving on up to the next grade, and they don't see nothing wrong with that.
Please stop the process of failure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe the Jeffersons comes on late tonight at Nick at Night, so you all can watch that tonight. Was that Gloria McKentis was with you, Lori Thomas? Okay. Margaret Hurley. Is Margaret Hurley here? And Margaret will be followed by Bill Quinslick. Margaret?
I teach at John Marshall. I teach English, and it is true that a lot of the children who are causing trouble in our classrooms can't read. I have seventh graders who are reading between first and fourth grade. Anyway, I have a statement to read that's not about that. We've reached a crisis in the Rochester City Schools. Our children, by their behavior, are screaming for help. Our teachers and administrators are in deep psychic pain as well. We can no longer avoid talking openly about a big problem and a sensitive issue that is undermining teaching and learning in our city schools. Our students' mental and behavioral disorders caused by stress that contribute to much of their inappropriate behavior and serious lack of achievement. What I am about to say comes from what I have learned as the mother of adopted children. Adoptees suffer disproportionately the adverse effects of stress, including anger, depression, impulsivity, hyperactivity, and attachment disorders, and they often require massive therapeutic and pharmacological intervention. So, what I'm about to say comes from a deeply personal and concerned place. Published in today's Democrat and Chronicle, the article, quote, "Stress Warps Brain and Behavior," end quote, says that stress in the form of mental and physical tension changes the brain irreversibly, damaging the ability to learn and remember and to regulate emotion while also causing mental and physical illnesses. That poverty causes stress is incontrovertible, and in the New York Times, Nobel laureate Paul Krugman in his article, "Poverty is Poison," takes this point to a fearful conclusion based on research presented by the American Association for the Advancement of Science. He writes, quote, "Neuroscientists have found that many children growing up in very poor families with low social status experience unhealthy..." Thank you. "...experience unhealthy levels of stress hormones which impair their neural development. The effect is to impair language development and memory, and hence the ability to escape poverty for the rest of the child's life." He points out that living in or near poverty has...
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. That's your time. Thank you. Bill, Mr. Bill Quinslick, followed by John Pavone.
Thank you. I'm Bill Quinlisk. I'm the chairperson of the home hospital teachers. I'm also a home hospital teacher for 15 years now and a city resident. We believe the home hospital teachers are being underutilized. In the past, we were an integral part of the district's academic and behavioral support system for suspended students, but this year, we were disconnected from these students. We'd like to become part of the solution and reconnect. The current restructuring of the home hospital teacher unit moved all the former home hospital ITI teachers from the home schools to the home hospital medical unit. These teachers used to teach kids who were out of school long-term for other than medical reasons. We'd like to try and reconnect with these students. We understand the superintendent's desire not to send any long-term suspended students home, but instead keep them in school whenever possible. But we respectfully disagree with the total elimination of out-of-school suspensions as an option in the toolbox of solutions to the suspension problem. But regardless of teaching location, we feel we can become part of the solution if just given the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. John Pavone, followed by Catherine Hardman.
Thank you, Mr. Bizard. Thank you, members of the board. I'm John Pavone. I'm the treasurer of the Rochester Teachers Association. One of the first lessons a teacher learns when they start teaching is when, when students ignore rules in their school, students will keep pushing the limits of what they can get away with. Discipline and consequences for these violations gradually diminishes unacceptable behavior. And when students know what a school will or will not tolerate, order is established, resulting in a secure educational environment. A teacher from East High School told me that a group of students stormed her room, ripped the phone off the wall, blocked the door, and beat a student in her room. Not one of those students were suspended. Not one of those students were disciplined. Not one of those students were punished. What's wrong with this district? What are you thinking? How can you tolerate this behavior? The superintendent of schools came to this district and promised secure schools and enhanced instruction. As a result of your failed policy, of in-school suspension policy, we have unsecure schools and diminished instruction. You can't teach a child who refuses to cooperate and disrupts the learning process of others. They rob the education of those students who want to learn and deserve to learn. We don't need a policy that promotes violence. We need a program that prevents violence. You put this program in place, it doesn't work. You put this program in place, it doesn't work, because everyone in the school says so. Ask them. And what do you do? You automatically go into denial. Stop this failed program. Let's all work together, I mean, all of us, from the teacher, administrator, bus driver, lunch personnel, students. Students follow the rules and demonstrate expected behavior so our schools don't become places of violence, but schools become what they're supposed to be, laboratories of learning.
Thank you, Mr. Pavone. Catherine Hartman. Catherine Hartman, followed by John Hickey.
I'm Catherine Hartman. I'm a math teacher at East High School. And I'm here because I'm not sure if everyone understands the severity of some of the situations in our school. I'm very concerned about the safety of my students, because I love them very much, and I love my school. And I'm worried about their safety, and I'm worried about their opportunity to learn. This past Monday, I was not able to be teaching my students like I want to. All I want to do is teach them math. Instead, I was getting a CAT scan because of a concussion I received from when I was slammed against a wall by a group of students storming into my room to attack one of my students. So I just would like a school environment where my students can feel safe and where I can do what I really love to do, which is teach them how to do math. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hickey. John Hickey, followed by Steve Epstein.
My name is John Hickey. I'm the RTA's Labor Relations Specialist. In my position, I've had a unique opportunity to work with the district, with the union. I was involved in the creation of this program at this point. At this point, I'm not happy with it. I don't, I'm not proud of the fact that I was part of this. I feel that over the summer, this was brought to us as an idea that would fix the problems in the schools. Since then, in my position at the RTA, I've heard more phone calls this year from teachers who are either scared of what's going to happen when they go to school, or they're terrified of what they've seen during the day. Now, aside from that, it was unfortunate, but while we were outside with a few hundred teachers tonight, the first thing we heard from the students that came down was the disrespect they saw in this room. Now, I know that if a teacher was accused of being disrespectful to students, you would be on top of them in a second. So I hope that from now on, when students are brave enough to come up here and speak about what's going on in their buildings, that you show them the respect they deserve. Thank you.
Is Steve Epstein here? Steve Epstein? Sherri Hawkins? Sherri Hawkins will be followed by Dave Wors. Steve Epstein, Sherri Hawkins? Dave Wors? Dave Wors here? And Dave Wors will be followed by DeeDee Ranger.
Mr. Bizard, members of the board, good evening. My name is Dave Wors. I've been a teacher in the district for 23 years, most of them at my old alma mater, Frederick Douglass Middle School, which was closed. I've seen what violence can do. I've seen what disorder can do. I agree with pretty much everything that has been said here on the topic, and I don't wish to waste your time by repeating the same message over and over. But, Mr. Bizard, a house divided cannot stand. You now have a divided house. Thank you.
DeeDee Ranger? Is DeeDee here? Maureen McCarron? Is Maureen here? Okay. And Ms. McCarron will be followed by Darryl Shonell.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, superintendent, students, parents, and my colleagues, fellow RTA members. My name is Maureen McCarron. I represent the more than 140 speech-language pathologists, members of the RTA. Our members, commonly known in their buildings as speech teachers, work in all 60 buildings of the city school district. I am here tonight to reflect their concerns about school safety, for our students primarily. Our students, the speech and hearing impaired of our city school district, at every grade level, are those who are least likely to defend themselves against bullying or intimidation in our buildings. They receive our services because they are not good communicators. They are most unlikely to report threats, intimidation, or even assault. Frankly, if they're afraid, we can usually only tell from their behavior. Because of this, school safety is the number-one concern of their parents, as reported to my members. As an RTA executive board member, I join with our members and the RTA leadership to call for further collaboration. We believe our teachers and all our staff, along with administrators, can resolve the current crisis surrounding the use of in-school suspension. Let us avoid further contention and resolve to work together for the good of our entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Darryl Shonell? Is Darryl here? Is Darryl here? Biagio Giardina? Biagio? Is Biagio here? Don Harmon? Is Don here? Don Harmon? Is Mary Ann Mackey here? Mary Ann Mackey? Paula Givens? Is Paula Givens here? And Ms. Givens will be followed by Lisa Rivera? Is Mr. Rivera here? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paula Givens. I've been a teacher 19 years at the same school, number 16. All of those years have been at the primary level, mostly kindergarten and first grade. I'm here to say that the discipline problem doesn't start at the secondary school. It's starting as young as kindergarten. We want to be part of the solution, not the problem. We all want to be able to teach instead of spending valuable learning time disciplining children. Our babies are coming to school angry, defiant, telling us they want to hurt themselves. They're crying out for help. And then that behavior manifests into acting-out behaviors. We have younger children in kindergarten coming to school with some issues that we can't address. So we go to our classroom management plans. We revise our classroom management plans. We have visualized plans for these students, FBAs, BIPs, TSST, ESS, buddy teachers, previous teachers. But in, none of this matters if we don't have the support we need, counselors, social workers, psychologists. Most of these are support people are stretched so thin because they're at two and three different schools. We need help now before a very serious tragedy occurs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Givens. Lisa Rivera? Lisa Rivera, followed by Marilyn DeWalt.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to make this really simple in analogy. Picture the district, an airplane, having to take a 180-day flight, maybe to France, Haiti, who knows where? Puerto Rico would be good, especially now. Inside the plane, there are different areas. Coach is a school. Inside the coach, we have many seats. Those will be classrooms. And what keeps the people inside the classrooms are the adults. They're the support. They're our safety. Now, most children will fit in coach adequately. But you'll get a large child, maybe, or a large adult, that tries to fit into the window seat. Doesn't fit. So we'll modify the program by putting the arm up. And it works. The kid still rides coach. It's great. Maybe, doesn't fit. So we'll put him in the middle. We'll call that ISS. And we'll put both arms up. The modification works. He can still ride in coach, even if you get another extension of the seatbelt, another adult in there. Coach may work. We're not arguing that. What we're saying is, you may get the child, or the adult, or whomever, that can't fit in a seat. That's why we have first class. All right? They may have to cost a little more, but the seats are bigger, and there's less of them. And then the needs are met. And as Crystal Chambers said, her son was in long-term twice until he went to Bosie's too. Oh, first class. And now he's successful. We're not saying that. We need to suspend the kids. We're saying that there are programs that don't work. As the custodian parent of an autistic child, regular school does not work for him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Good night. Marilyn DeWalt, are you here? Is Marilyn here? Marilyn, if you're here. Okay. Kyle Crandall? Mr. Crandall here? Kyle Crandall, followed by Paula Linza. Is Paula here?
Good evening. I have some data, but I don't want this to count against my time. So if you would like the data that I have for East High, I have it...
If you want to hand that to the clerks, she can pass them down to us.
Thank you. I am here this evening wearing many hats. First off, I'm the registrar at East High School, and I'm concerned with our numbers, which those of you that are interested can certainly take a look at. Back when we went to the seven-through-12 model a few years ago, we were promised that we would have a maximum of 250 students at grade levels seventh and eighth. Our current numbers, grade seven, 335 students; grade eight, 363 students; grades seven, eight, and nine combined, 1,200 students; grades 10 through 12, 692. We are a large middle school with a few high school students. It has been said that we have been set up to fail, and I agree. I also wear the hat of neighborhood president. I'm neighborhood president of the Beachwood Neighborhood Coalition. I've lived in that neighborhood for nine years, a neighborhood that is called the hood by many of my neighbors, who are my students. I agree that we should not send kids out of school into the streets. I believe this policy was well-intentioned, but there are clearly problems. East High has been dragged through the mud, but tonight is evidence that East High is not alone. As a neighborhood activist, people do not normally rally without a reason. I want you to realize that tonight, for every single person that leaves this room, there are people out in the cold waiting to come in, and they are replacing them one by one. The misconception here is that teachers are looking out for themselves. I do not believe that at all. As a member of the city church community, I am ashamed to say that many times I have seen more compassion from my colleagues in the Rochester City School District than I have at my own church. We cannot continue the finger-pointing that has become so divisive. Instead, what we are doing tonight is calling upon you, as our elected leaders, to help us. Lastly, as a parent of three homeschooled children, I want to send my children to the Rochester City School District as they approach the secondary level. I'm calling upon the Board of Education to help us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula Linza? Paula Linza here? Timothy Multer? Followed by Maureen Duhan.
Good evening, commissioners. I have worked as an employee of this district as a special education teacher for over 12 years. I have done the typical, like take groups of, or like volunteering to be a class advisor or chaperone dances. And I've also done the atypical, like take a group of students on a five-day trip to Walt Disney World. I worked with another group of students for four years to raise the money to take them on an all-expenses-paid trip to the Caribbean. I have witnessed the behaviors of the students in our district decline to an unprecedented level. While I support the policy of the superintendent to keep students in school, I am appalled, discouraged, and frightened at the effect it has had on East High School. It is clearly a problem. The problem is a direct result of the lack of planning before the implementation of this policy. Our superintendent seems to think that a suspension policy can be a one-size-fits-all regardless of circumstances. Additionally, instead of being willing to adjust, he has chosen to stay the course, consequences be damned. While there have been some recent changes in the last few days at East High School, quite frankly, so far it has been a matter of too little, too late. Due to the absence of proper planning, there is still chaos. Now that the students have learned that there are minimal consequences, that they have been emboldened to blatantly disregard school rules and adults, it is going to take a much more concentrated and planned course of action to return the safety of our schools, or return safety to our schools and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Multer. Maureen Duhan? And Maureen will be followed by James Garwood. James, are you here? James Garwood? Well, and then after Maureen, then if James is in here, Christine Price, if you can make your way to the podium. If you can make your way up front. Go ahead, Maureen.
My name is Maureen Duhan. I'm proud to be a teacher at Nathanae Rochester Community School. I'm proud to be a city school teacher. When I go places and people ask me what I do, and I say I teach in the Rochester City School District, and people go, oh, I'm so sorry. I say, why are you sorry? I love what I do. I love my students. But I will tell you that I don't know when the last time Ms. Powell came to do her job and she was called an F'n white B, which is what happened to me so many times last year. I had to leave ninth grade at Nathanae Rochester and go to fourth grade so that I could feel safe. Mr. Bizard was in my classroom, probably doesn't remember it. He was in there with Ms. Kaufman. My classroom is amazing. My students are amazing. But I see those one or two students who, if they don't get an intervention at a low grade, they're going to become those students that we're talking about. We need to focus on early intervention, getting to those kids before they become problem students. Last thing, I know my time's probably running out, but Ms. Campos and Mr. Williams, I'm a representative in the Legislative District, in the Democratic Committee, who elected, who nominated you for election to this committee. Please remember the passion that you came to us with when you asked for our nomination and carry through with your job, Mr. Williams. Please carry through with your job that you promised us that you would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Price? Followed by Jeffrey Feinberg.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. I wanted to speak about something different, because I do agree with much of what's been said, and I don't want to be repetitive. So I've been noticing that as you're listening to all of us speak, if you look at what the room is like, it's orderly, it's quiet, it's respectful. These are the things that are lacking for my students, for our students, as I'm trying to teach them at East High School every day. The door is being banged on. There's loud, chaotic things going on in the hall. My students come in first period talking about chaos and drama that's happened that morning or the previous afternoon, and I have to repeatedly ask them to please try to set that aside for a moment so that we can focus on what we need to learn this morning. And then I go to my next class, and second period's talking about chaos from the morning and first period. I have students who come into my room, say hello to me, we chat, and then they do not come to my class later in the day because they know they don't have to. They can wander the halls, and there's no consequence to that. I can report it. I can call home. I can do all the things that are in my power, and I still can't get those kids in my classroom because they know they don't have to actually report, because nothing will be done if they don't. And even when I bring it to their attention the next time I see them, they're not concerned. My eighth-period class is begging me to not worry about the hall. They'll focus, they'll focus. But as the kids run up and down the hall in chaos as a parent, and I have to stop three and four times, spending three or four minutes each time in the hallway, asking kids to please quiet down because we have a class going on, and my students... on, and my students are distracted, and my students can't learn with that going on. And I'm told many choice words as I ask them to quiet down and move on to their class or move on to their administrator. My kids are suffering. My students who are in class doing the right thing, trying to get an education, trying to do what they need to do, they're the ones who are suffering. Things need to change.
Thank you. Jeffrey Feinberg? Followed by Joanne Liberty.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Feinberg, and I've been in the district for over 24 years. I would have to say that in the last year or two, I have noticed a decrease in the amount of safety at our school at Franklin. And I had a speech written, but I've decided to talk from the heart. I'm Chair of Special Ed, elected for the RTA, and I represent 600 teachers in Special Ed. The bottom line today was, I had a student who's emotionally disturbed come to my room during lunchtime, not go to lunch, and he said to me, well, I said to the student, "How come, you know, why don't you go to lunch? This is an emotionally disturbed student." He said to me, "I'm afraid, let me stay here, let me eat lunch." This has happened with some of my other students, actually, in the last few weeks. I don't want to be repetitious. We are here because we love our students, we're dedicated professionals, most of us have been here since 5:30. We are here because we love our students and we want them to be safe. And when I had a student, again, emotionally disturbed, come to me because there's not an alternative setting for him, scared to just eat, I felt, that's the bottom line, we need your help at this point. I don't have an easy answer, many of us don't, but we need your help, and I believe somewhere, somehow, we'll come up with an answer. But that's all I have to say because I don't want to be repetitious.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. Joanne Liberty? And Ms. Liberty will be followed by Pam McMindees.
I've been a teacher at Rochester City Schools for the last 16 years, and I'm proud to say that I am. I would never teach anyplace else. You think there are only problems in the high schools? I'm here tonight to talk about school safety in elementary schools, in concerns my colleagues and I share. I want you to put yourself in our shoes and then tell me that you believe that everything is fine. A teacher is punched in the back several times by a student, this student receives three days of ISS and returns back to their teacher's classroom. A student threatens to stab his teacher, brings a knife to school, shows it to his classmates, and tells them that if they say anything to anyone, he is going to cut them real bad. This student receives five days of ISS, of which he only attends a few days, and then he returns back to the same classroom. Another student tips over desks, throws chairs, rips bulletin board displays off the wall, and threatens classmates. It takes three adults to corral this student and remove him from the classroom. He receives five days of ISS, then goes back to the same classroom, just to do it all over again. A student threatens to punch another student in the face and says he is going to bring a pistol to school and shoot her. A boy threatens another student by saying he was going to shoot her with a real gun. Students are clear about the message they are hearing. I can do anything I want, and you can't do anything to me. You can't even suspend me. Since September, we have had 82 official and unofficial ISS. Five students were twice, three were there three times, three were there five times, and one student was in ISS six times. If these kids are like this in elementary school, what are they going to be like by the time they get to middle and high school? You talk about keeping all kids in school and not suspending them for any reason because it takes away valuable instruction time. Well, what about the instructional time lost to all the other students because of these unruly and violent kids? The majority of kids want to learn.
Thank you, Ms. Liberty.
What's it going to take? Another Peter Castle incident?
Thank you. Pam McMindees, are you here? Followed by Daniel Dunn, are you here, Daniel? Daniel Dunn, if you're here, if you can make your way up front, you'll be after Pam McMindees.
It's Pam McMindees, and I am an elementary school art teacher right now, but I've also done... Thank you. I'm an elementary school art teacher right now, but I've been at middle school and I've been at high school. I am, I was very happy that we haven't had to come to a school board meeting in the numbers that we have shown up today for so many years. This is, as a young teacher, I was here, and I have not had to be here since. I came to speak about elementary school, but being outside for so long and talking to so many of the people that I've worked with that taught me to become the really, really good, caring teacher that I am now, I was disheartened and ashamed. Today, teachers at East High School had dozens of police officers there, and they still felt unsafe. The phone system didn't work. One teacher said to me, "I have a severely asthmatic student in my class, and I was so frightened that this kid was going to have an asthmatic attack, and I had no way of calling for help for him." What are they supposed to do? How are they supposed to teach? And how can you sit there, carry on business today with so many people, so impassioned, and taking time out of their day to come speak to you and make so many people wait? It's embarrassing, and I am embarrassed for all of you. Thank you.
Daniel Dunn? Is Daniel Dunn here?
Hi, I'm Candace Rubin, and I've been a home hospital teacher with the district since 1996. I think most of the teachers here tonight would contend that the elimination of out-of-school suspensions has thrown the schools into turmoil. But just as importantly, it's ill-served, long-term suspended students, many of whom respond very positively when placed into one-to-one learning situations. Individual instruction allows our teachers to tailor methods and materials to the needs of each student, addressing weaknesses and strengths that may not have been apparent in a classroom. Moreover, home hospital teachers are usually a good PR tool for the district, often breaking the cycle of negative teacher feedback and helping parents realize that teachers are not only humans but also interested in the best outcomes for their children. I've worked in many homes where mothers would listen to a lesson only to come out and say, "I never knew that." We're teaching, once in a while, teach the mother something, too. The attendance of students on home instruction averages about 80%, exceeding the attendance of students in alternative programs. We've all had graduates and student success stories. I'm regularly contacted by two former students who are now at MCC. As school district representatives who go into student homes, our teachers model mature behavior unlike what they would see in the ISS rooms. It's counterintuitive to believe that disruptive students will thrive when placed in a school with those who demonstrate equally bad behavior. Taking this doctrinaire approach, rather than considering each suspension individually, flies in the face of sound policy. Home instruction can provide a safety valve for the district. Nationally, home-schooled students outperform those who are in classrooms. As I remind my students, individual instruction was once a domain only of aristocrats and royalty. It should remain as a resource within the district.
Thank you. Moses Robinson? Is Moses here? Moses, I don't see Moses. Father Don Wolschleger, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name. Father Don Wolschleger, is he here? Is the father here? Barbara Singleton? Ms. Singleton, are you here? And Ms. Singleton will be followed by Diana Volenger. Ms. Volenger, are you here? Okay, thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. And Superintendent Bizard, I do applaud you for your effort and your vision for the Rochester City School District. But I did an undercover assignment. I do teach in the district, but right now it's a substitute. And what I want to say to you...
There's a cellphone on somewhere.
Okay. What I want to say to you is that I did go into, I volunteered to go into the ISS rooms. I thought it was a pretty good idea instead of sending the children home, like you were saying, for safety reasons. But in the high school that I went to, it was not organized. It was not organized at all. The students did not have any work. And when I saw a student come to that door and said, "I'll be right back next period," I had a problem with that. Because they, he wanted to be in the room, because it was like they were having fun in there. I mean, you had people courting, you had students that were just not doing anything. The ones in the elementary schools are a little bit more structured, but what I say to you is that it's a good vision, but it needs to be redesigned. It honestly does. Because these kids, there is a school here, where this gentleman earlier that was talking about his sister's school in New York City, there's a school right here with an excellent ISS program that's going on. It starts at 2:30 and it ends at 4:30, and when you walk into that room, if you dropped a cotton ball, you could hear it hit the floor. Those kids are learning in there. Teachers are bringing work to them, they're picking the work up in the afternoon, and it's being structured like that. And I will name the name of the school that I'm proud to say, and it's Marshall High School. It's called the ASAP program. So if you modeled that for all the other schools, I think that the vision that you have for this ISS program would work.
Thank you, Ms.
Because right now, it honestly isn't working.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton.
I was glad when I got out of there.
Thank you.
I mean, you have other students that wants to be there, and if they want to be there, it's not working. It's not, it's not working.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton.
So once again, I applaud you for it, but redesign it, please.
Thank you.
And I'm pretty sure if you involve the community, it will work.
Thank you. Is Michelle Floyd here? Michelle Floyd, are you here, Michelle? Michelle, you're, okay, you're next, Michelle.
Good evening, Superintendent Bizard, and ladies and gentlemen of the school board. I come to you tonight as an ESSL teacher at School 45 and also as a faculty rep, and I am bringing the comments and concerns of my colleagues at School 45. How can we be expected to raise test scores if so much instructional time is wasted by dealing with chronic behavior problems? We do have many students who want to learn, and they are getting short-changed by the few whose actions get too much of the teacher's attention. Many students could benefit from intense counseling sessions, social skills training, and anger management, but who should be doing it? Those who do go to counseling with our social workers get only 30 minutes once a week, within a small group, when what they really need is one-on-one intervention for a longer period of time and more than once a week. Now, let me just tell you a couple of the most egregious incidents that have occurred in the recent history. A pregnant teacher had a desk repeatedly slammed into her stomach by a student who was still in her classroom. A special ed teacher had her hand slit open requiring stitches, and the student spent one day in the ATS room and is back in her classroom. Verbal assaults even by primary students are becoming the norm with no consequences. ISS or ATS should be a first step, not the final step. Many of these students need other services or placements that our district is not providing. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to say that I work at East High School, and I want to first give applause to Dr. Pringle and her hard work in trying to make the school a safe school. But I want to say that I have not yet heard anyone say where the blame really needs to be blamed, and that's parenting. We are lacking so much parenting in our school system that it's not even funny. I am a mother of five, and I got three that graduated, two from college, and one more to go. And if my kid acted the way these kids act in school, they wouldn't even have to come to school, because it doesn't make sense. My nephew goes to East High School, and I know that he's a mess. And I'm gonna say it, put it out there, my sister's here, it's her son, he's a mess. It's like night and day with him. When he's home, you would not know that this is the kid that's at school. These kids that are having these problems is way deeper than we think, folks. It's way deeper than what we think. It's something going on, but if we don't got the parents to find out what's going on with their kids, we're gonna continue to have this problem. And I'm appalled that there's not parents here to see what's really going on. It was a few, but them few parents were here, kids are probably doing well in school. I'm just appalled, and I want to say that East is a good school. Yes, we do have issues, but who don't? Dr. Pringle is trying her best to do what she can, and we need to stop pointing a finger at the staff members and stop pointing the fingers where they need to be pointed, and that's at home. The problem comes from home, and they need to get it together.
Thank you, Ms. Floyd. Howard Krug, are you here? And Mr. Krug, we follow by Margaret Sargent.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Dr. Powell, I'm not here with a mob action. I came here, I didn't tell anybody I was gonna speak, I'm sorry, I'm not part of it, I'm not carrying a sign, okay? Ms. Elliott, I gotta tell you, teaching in the city, you're exactly right. People of color need to be brought out in the curriculum. I've worked with Dr. Grant for years to bring in other voices. I use Howard Zen, I use other things. I'm amazed that some on the board and some of the people who are standing up here, I had a prepared speech, but I'm not gonna read it. I'm amazed that they said that some of the students who stood up from East were being tools, and they used the word "tools," of adults. That's unacceptable. These were kids who came at, James Lewis, who told him to take pictures in the cafeteria? Nobody. He took them because he felt something was wrong. He felt something was very wrong, that's why he took them. You once told me the school system's broke. With all due respect, I agree with you. The number of suspensions, things that kids get suspended for, it's amazing to me. Some, some of the reasons that kids get suspended, it appalls me as well, and the number does. But I do know there's some things that are happening. And I'm deeply saddened by the fearful message we got to our students that we're not having no longer out-of-school suspension policy. And while it's true we can't suspend students for just minor infractions and send them home, there does have to be some consequences for dangerous behaviors or for violent and repeated behaviors. I'm here tonight because, my wife told me not to say this, but I'm sorry, Susan, I gotta say it. She teaches over at School 29, and she's an elementary school teacher in a third grade. And my wife teaches a student who has attacked five different staff members. My wife was one of them. One of them was attacked, she was attacked because she tried to call the phone and the child pushed her away.
Thank you.
That's sad. I do have, if I could just say two things real quick. I don't, I don't agree with you. I think the ISS room can work if we have the trained personnel and the counselors in there, in the room to help out. Number two, I think we need to shift for the violent offenders and the repeat offenders...
Thank you, Mr. Krug.
...to the alternative after-school program.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have my suggestions here.
If you could give those to the clerk, I would greatly appreciate it. Margaret Sargent? Followed by Gail Keating, is Gail here? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Margaret Sargent, and I'm the elected secretary of the Rochester Teachers Association. I moved back to Rochester in 1982 as a special education teacher. I was excited to move back to Rochester and very excited to teach in the school district. In the spring of 1983, Peter Castle was murdered in an elementary school. I was terrified and thought, "What am I doing back here?" But I stayed. I stayed because I cared about my children and their educational and emotional well-being. I have always wanted, not only for my students to be safe, but all students. I have watched in the last few months and listened to my colleagues fighting every single day to make sure that not only their kids are safe, their students, but all the students in their schools. We can no longer ignore what is happening in all of our schools. We are not keeping our students and our colleagues safe. We must put aside the no-suspension policy and come together and collaboratively resolve these safety issues before another student or another adult is harmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sargent. Thank you, Ms. Sargent. Gail Keating? Followed by Gregory Walters. Mr. Walters, is Greg Walters here? Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm Gail Keating, home hospital teacher. I'm not here to talk about, really, what we do, but I was struck downstairs by a couple of students that I had met. Wonderful young men that wanted me to speak on their behalf. One was Jordan Rimmer, and the other one was Daniel Humphrey. I guess they are ROTC. They were in full uniform, really lovely young men. And they wanted me to desperately tell you that they wanted safe schools. They were begging for it. Also, they were from East, these young men, and they also said they were pushed out of their ROTC room for making space for the ISS room, and they were really upset about that. Furthermore, I just really wanted to ask the board, what about the other students, the other students who really want to learn? I think really that's what we need to ask ourselves.